On the local cable television channel and on YouTube. Tonight, we have an, we'll begin an open session. A call to order, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence, public service announcements, and then we will go to a public hearing in a joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. From there, we'll have action items consisting of consideration and possible action on accepting the proposal from EA Engineering Science and Technology Incorporated to provide project management for the Sturbridge landfill for approximately $48,365. And consideration and possible action on a single or split tax rate, a consideration and possible action on an open space discount, consideration and possible action on residential exemption, consideration and possible action on a small commercial exemption, old business, and then adjourned. With that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You know, just a moment of silence in these times, just thinking of our men and women who are serving, specifically our National Guard and all their good service, please just take a moment of silence. Thank you. Public service announcements, Mary Lou.
I have nothing.
Mary Don.
Don't.
And I have none either. Okay. We posted this meeting for, the public hearing for 6:45, right?
No.
Okay, great. So then I would like to call a public hearing with the joint, with the Board of Assessors. I think you guys have to come up and start your meeting. I say, you guys could've worked harder on the slideshow. All right. Well, Ann, take it away.
Good evening. We're here to hold the qualification hearing for fiscal year 2026 for the town of Sturbridge. My name is Ann Murphy. I'm the principal assessor.
Ms. Witten here, Paul Murphy, Jennifer Ford.
Laura McGrath, Board of Assessors.
So, the purpose of this meeting is to present information to the select board so that they may consider the tax rate options available for the town of Sturbridge. This is not a hearing to decide a tax rate, and it does not decide how much money can be raised. It only determines the distribution of the tax levy among the property classes. And just to remind everyone, tonight's presentation has a tax rate of $15.60 that has not been approved by the Department of Revenue, but we think it's as close to it as we can get. So, up on the screen now is a copy of our LA4 form that's submitted to the Bureau of Local Assessment. It shows how many parcels are in each class and the breakdown of those classes. Class 1 is our residential class, and as you can see with the total, it's our largest amount. And we no longer have an open space class due to the vote that was taken at town meeting in April. And the other three classes is what we refer to in this presentation as the SIP class. So, it's commercial, industrial, and personal property. And our total town value is $2,151,267,819 in value. So, this is a history of the average single-family value. As you can see from the chart, the average residential property in Sturbridge has increased over the last 10 years, and it's increased at a steady pace. However, you see a larger increase around 2022 to 2025. That was the COVID impact. You see now, 2026, we're kind of back in line where we were pre-COVID with a 4.49 roughly percentage of an average single-family home. The next is the levy allocation. This is the levy with a single tax rate. And as you can see, our residential values carry the brunt of the levy at about 85%. And the SIP, the commercial, industrial, personal property, is at about 15%. So, the first item is voting on the SIP factor, whether you want to keep a single rate or split it to have a lower residential factor. There's 351 Massachusetts cities and towns, and 113 of them have a higher SIP value than Sturbridge. The higher the SIP value, it makes it more feasible for us to split that rate. And in fiscal 2025, 111 had a split tax rate, of which 99 had a higher SIP value than Sturbridge. So, impact of a split tax rate. It reduces the taxes for residential properties, but it increases the taxes for the mixed-use commercial and industrial properties, and also the taxpayers who are required to pay personal property tax. A residential and a commercial property valued at $504,459 with a single rate of $15.60 would have a tax bill of $7,869.56. If we split the tax rate at the 150% shift, the residential property tax would change, the rate would change to $14.21, and the tax would be $7,168.36 for the savings of The commercial property at the same value, their tax rate would go up to $2341 with a tax bill of $11,898, which is an increase of $3,939.82. So, the 150% shift would increase the SIP rate by $7.81 per thousand, and it would reduce the residential rate by $1.39. The next item is the residential discount. It's an exemption that's an option under the property tax classification that shifts the tax burden within the residential class to qualified owners. It does not impact the commercial, industrial, or personal property. It would give qualified property owners a moderate-value property, and the unqualified property owners are usually the higher-value homes, vacation homes, residential properties not owned by an owner, or not occupied by the owner, including like apartments and things like that. The exemption cannot exceed 35% of the average assessed value of all residential properties. So, if the Board were to adopt a residential exemption of 35%, it would reduce the value of a qualified property by $153,162, and the residential rate would increase to $20.85. So, an example of the impact would be that a qualified property assessed at the $504,459 would see a decrease of $545, and a non-qualified property tax would see an increase of $2,648 in taxes. In fiscal 2025, there were 15 cities and towns that adopted a residential exemption. You could go with a 15% tax rate impact, and that would be an exemption of $65,641. It would change the tax rate from 1560 to 1717, and a qualified property would see a decrease of taxes in the amount of about $335, and a non-qualified property would see an increase of about $792. So, our shifting points on it, if you adopt a residential exemption, regardless of the percentage, you would see about 2,519 properties would probably see a decrease, and 1,650 properties would see an increase. These are approximate numbers because there are things that they have to qualify for. And keep in mind that the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative would be greatly impacted if a residential exemption were adopted. And the next one is the small commercial exemption. So, the select board may decide annually to exempt up to 10% of the value of a commercial property that qualify. Only commercial properties are eligible, so this would not impact residential properties, and the industrial properties or the personal properties do not qualify for this. The properties must be occupied by the business as of January 1, 2025. It does not have to be owner-occupied, and no more than 10 employees at all locations during the previous calendar year, and the property must have a valuation of less than $1 million. If a property has multiple commercial occupants, like a little strip mall or something like that, all the occupants have to be eligible in order to receive the exemption. The Department of Labor and Workforce, they send us a list, and there was 162 businesses on that list, about 41 out of that would qualify for the exemption. The total valuation of that is about $28,294,400. A 10% shift would increase the tax rate from 1560 to 1577, approximately 17 cents. And a qualified commercial property assessed at $728,800 would see a decrease of $1,024, and a non-qualified property of the same value would see an increase of about $125 in taxes. So, only the commercial properties can qualify, but the industrial class would share the burden of the shift. And if the owner of the prop, it's the owner of the property, not the businesses on the site that received the tax benefit. The commercial properties account for 10.11% of the levy, and the industrial properties account for 1.97% of the levy. So, any sole proprietorship or partnership that does not appear on our certified list could apply directly to the assessor's office, and the assessors would make the determination whether it met the criterion for the previous calendar year. So, the Board and assessors voted at their meeting prior to this meeting to recommend the following: to adopt a single tax rate, not to adopt a residential exemption, and not to adopt a small commercial exemption. This concludes our presentation this evening.
Thanks, Ann. Just an initial question asked by the audience. How long has Sturbridge had a single taxpayer?
The last time they split the tax rate was 2014. That was actually the year that I started. I came in at the end of 2014, and that was the last year.
Okay.
They had it for about three or four years. They tried it, and they went, they had the split tax rate, I believe it was 2010, and then each year they lowered it to get it back to a single tax rate, a little bit each year.
Gotcha. Okay.
I would agree with that because I was on the Board, and it was always a split vote, 3-2, with Mary and I voting against it, I think. But yeah, and so I agree, every year after that, they reduced the amount of the split without saying it completely, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I just had a couple. Did we always get this front-page spreadsheet showing us? I mean, I like it, but have you always given us that?
Last year was the first year that, last year or the year before, I changed it up a little bit. I figured you kind of got tired of it.
I don't even remember getting it last year. So, this basically.
That's the LA4 you're talking about?
Yeah.
The columns with all the values?
Correct. So, this basically says, just so I understand, that we have basically 2.1 billion in property value?
Yes.
Combining all the different commercial, industrial, residential.
And personal property.
Yep. And so, what is all this property type, 101, 102, all within the residential? Just for my own understanding, because I don't get it.
So, each property type has to have a land use code, they call it. Okay? So, these little codes, the property type, a 101 is a single-family, a 102 is a condominium, 103 is a manufactured home, a 109 is a property that has multiple homes on it, 104 is a two-family, 105 is a three-family. The 111s to the 125s are the apartments, the 130s and the 132 is land, the 106 is land with maybe like an outbuilding on it. The 200s were the open-space codes, which we don't have, that was. 300s are commercial, and so you'll see that the, if you follow over to the commercial column, Class 3 Commercial, that's where you'll find those values. The 400s are industrial. The chapter lands are, they fall under the commercial column, the values. And then the 012s to the 043s are those mixed-use, and you'll see that they fall under each one. They fall under residential, commercial, and industrial because those are the ones that have a little bit of both.
Okay.
And then all the 500 codes, those are all the personal properties. So, you see that they fall in the last column under personal property. So, yeah, each property has to have a code.
So, we have a total of 5,000 parcels in all, no matter what they are residentially, apartment, condos, single-family?
Yep. It's actually like 4,466 because then the other ones, the 500s, are like the personal property accounts. So, that's, that's not a building, it's the business, like the secondary bill that the businesses get for the items they use in business, they get taxed on that, like their shelving and their desks and their phones and things like that. So, you would subtract those out of that 5,038, and you would come up with how many parcels we have, which I believe is like 4,466, something like that.
And has this pretty much stayed the same over the years in terms of?
Yeah, there's slight differences, like the 101s, whenever we have new buildings, you'll see that number go up. You know, sometimes you'll see the 130s go down because it was vacant land, and now they built a house on it. So, that number will go down, but the 101 will go up, you know? So, those parcel counts adjust a little bit each year based on what's happening. But a lot of them, like the commercials, they pretty much stay the same. We haven't had a lot of commercial, new building, or industrial, things like that.
Then my other question is, so, it's correct that now, this year, the value of the homes has really gone, almost gone down to 2018. It's been a big drop in how much our property values have increased, right? Because we're at 4.4.
Yeah, property values have still increased.
Yeah, but we're at 4.4.
But it's almost back to pre-COVID, yeah.
Okay. And so, because now we're at 4.49%.
Well, no, that's the, that's the increase in the average single-family home.
Right.
So, most parcel, right, so she's got that up there. So, this is just showing what the average, because the, every year when we submit all of our values, the Department of Revenue sends us back a report and says, okay, this is your average single-family now.
I get it.
So, we're, you know, the value is 504, but it only went up 4.49%, which is more in line with what it was before we had COVID.
Right. And so, just for people watching, because I understood it at 1.2, but for the larger increases, the double-digit percentages, 2023, 24, 25, a little bit into 22.
Yep.
Why did the impact of COVID have such an effect on the value of the homes?
Well, we say it was COVID because we found that when COVID hit, things kind of stopped for a moment, and then when it came back on, there was a lot of people working from home. So, they were, look, there wasn't enough homes on the market to satisfy the demand for people looking for homes. So, that drove up the price of the houses.
If they were working out of their house.
Right. So, a lot of people were like, okay, I need a bigger house maybe because now I needed home office and things. So, people were moving around, but there wasn't a lot to choose from.
Okay. So, low inventory.
That drives up the, that drives up the par.
And Mary, if I could, part of it here was our location strategically between two major cities with Hartford and Boston, and then Springfield, and Worcester is secondary.
We got urban people coming in.
We became a prime location for people who used to go to Boston to buy nice homes. We saw them on the lakes. This is, this is where everything kind of exploded.
I tried to explain that to some people, but I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Yeah, and I found that one.
So, low inventory, and city people with higher salaries started to move away from the suburbs.
Absolutely. Yep. And that's what I would find when I would go out on my sales inspection, I would always ask people, you know, are you, were you already in Sturbridge, or did you, you know, move to Sturbridge and why? And a lot of them during the COVID were, I don't, I don't have to go to work, I don't have to drive to Boston anymore, so I don't need to rent. I can buy something here. I only have to go in one day a week.
So, but now it's kind of stabilized.
Right. So, they had more, substantial salaries coming, buying properties here, you know, the prices.
But I know, like, at least.
There was those bidding wars and.
Right, right. I get it.
It was just crazy. It was a crazy time.
But now I think some businesses, the pendulum has swung, and now they're encouraging people to go back into the office.
Right.
At least for some parts of the week, and some of them for all week, they want them back. So, I didn't know if that's also going to kind of.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's going to play a factor. It may, it may very well, but we just noticed that even though the, it's just the average single-family has only gone up 4.49%, our values overall went up somewhere between, say, 5% and 7% was the average increase for values. That's just giving you the, basically taking all of the single-family homes and coming up with what an average value is.
If you consider the increase in interest rates adjacent to that, that's still very, those are very positive numbers.
So, there was a lot of things going on during those COVID years, you know? And the interest rates were very low starting off. So, that's why you had those bidding wars and things like that. So, it just, you know? But I think we're starting to see us go back to just normal, normal times and normal increases.
Mary Lou, I think you had something to say.
Well, I just, I wanted to know, when you said that the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative would be greatly impacted, what do you mean by greatly impacted?
Okay. So, because they, if we adopt a residential exemption, they would not qualify for it, so their taxes will go up.
Okay.
So, if we adopt a 35% residential exemption, their increase in taxes would be $21,964.63. If we went with, say, a 15%, their increase would be $5,708.12. So, we always kind of keep that in mind.
Increase, that's always.
Just leave the one thing that makes it.
That's the real stickler for, at least I'll speak for myself, when I've contemplated, well, maybe the larger, late, you know, maybe the bigger homes, second homes, you know, we could shift a little bit, but then the retirement communities.
No, that wouldn't be fair to them.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it is a public hearing. We have one person here. Do you want any questions?
No.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to vote property taxes, but beyond that.
All right. Anything else from the Board? Any other questions? Okay.
Motion to.
End of the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
No, you have to vote first.
Close the hearing, and then you vote.
Oh, close the hearing. Oh, sorry.
All right. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I did.
Oh, you didn't make a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. Moving on to the action items, skipping to action item B, consideration and possible action on a single or split tax rate. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that the Board of Selectmen determines a single tax rate.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Great. All right. Moving on to consideration and possible action on an open space discount.
We don't have to do the open space anymore.
Can, for the, through our chair, can you just explain one more time for the people watching why we don't have that anymore based on our vote?
Oh, okay. Right. The, it's, it's a funny phrase because open space means two different things. Open space for this purpose means only chapter-land parcels, and they had put the chapter-land parcels under an open-space category back when they did a split tax rate so that the chapter-land parcels would be assessed at, sorry, at the residential rate, not the commercial rate. The Department of Revenue has watched us over the last 10 years, and they said, you're not doing a split tax rate. You shouldn't have your chapter-land in, in the open-space category unless you're doing a split tax rate. And they said, it was following up with all these new things like that, the slide that you had picked out with all the classifications, all those land use codes. The chapter-lands have their own special code, and now when they populate in, when they're in the open space, we have to manually go into each parcel and extract everything and put it in. It causes a lot of chance for human error, and the Department of Revenue was not on board with that. So, that was one of the directives they gave us to bring our chapter-land back into the codes that they should be under, not the open-space codes.
And we had never developed an open space because they were already getting protection through the state.
Through the chapter-land, right.
So, we never did it anyway.
Right. It's a different open space than when Gene Boobon, the planning department, when they talk about open space, they're talking about a different type of open space than chapter-land. When I talk about open space, it's strictly chapter-land.
It's truly, it was more of a clerical.
Yeah, it was more of a.
Kind of a thing as opposed to a true zoning or use.
Yeah, like that use code, and where those figures populate in, it draws it from our database, and because the chapter-land was being called a 200 code instead of the 600, 700, and 800 codes, it wasn't pulling through correctly, and it was causing a lot of errors. So, they said you really need to correct.
But I mean, it hasn't had any impact from a practical standpoint.
No.
On those people who have their land in chapter.
Correct. They're still getting assessed at the same value. It didn't change their values at all.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Moving on to action item C, consideration and possible action on a residential exemption. Do we have any discussion?
Well, you said C and D.
Oh, did I say C and D? I meant D. So, consideration and possible action on a residential exemption. Do we have any discussion on it? Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen not take action on the residential exemption.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. All right. Moving on to action item E, consideration and possible action on a small commercial exemption. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen not take action on the small commercial exemption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, guys, and thanks again for another job well done.
Thank you, Ann. Thanks to the Board.
We appreciate all of you guys.
Get a haircut.
Yeah, you're looking sharp tonight. All right. I'm deciding here.
Ooh, zing.
No way, I.
Oh, you meant it.
Yeah.
She wasn't mean to.
I know, it's a waste of money.
I mean, I can tell when people get haircuts.
Oh, goodness.
Okay.
That went down a whole road. All right. Thank you guys so much. We really do appreciate it.
We appreciate you having a meeting today because it allowed me to vote against you after to see my grandson.
Well, you know, we're.
They're a grandma, they're two.
Yep, my grandson, I haven't seen him since he was born.
Maybe it was christened.
Really happened, yes.
So, it's a chriseling.
Oh, your grandson, not grandmother.
I mean, I've always said, the four of us are wonderful.
You are, you are. I appreciate it.
No. Congratulations, Ann.
Your arm won't have to pat you back.
How you left out Chase. You said the four of us are wonderful.
He was in here. He'd be a thing for this thing, and he would slap there.
It's so fun.
Oh, yeah, but he's 10 hours away by car. That's okay. I think they are.
You made it.
Unwillingly, but I think.
It's 15 hours.
Tennessee. He's down in Springfield, Tennessee.
Oh, wow. Great.
So, yeah.
All right.
So, thank you. I appreciate you doing that.
Of course. Nice seeing you guys. Thanks for coming in. All right. We're going to move on to action item A, which is consideration and possible action on accepting the proposal from EA Engineering Science and Technology Incorporated to provide project management for the Sturbridge landfill for approximately $48,365. So, what's going on here?
This came from Ken and the Board of Health. This is a grading project on the landfill that had been voted at town meeting. It's funded through town meeting. This, regardless of whether we move or when we move to close the landfill, which is ultimately going to happen sooner or not later, this is work that would have to be done anyway, this type of grading. It's an environmental thing, so this does not, this is not like money out the window that we're going to have to redo or undo in a year or two. So, this would go toward it anyway.
Okay.
So, I do support this.
I mean, yeah, and landfills need to be graded. Any questions, concerns from the Board?
I can say I don't totally understand. What do you mean by grading?
It has to do with the slope of the land and runoff, and so it's required that it stays at a certain level. And when we go to close it, we're going to have to fill to level where there are downgrades, if you will. And so, this is a part of that grading and elevating. It's that much less we will have to do when we ultimately cap it.
Have we ever done this before? Every few years?
I think it's been done before, but I'm not 100% sure. But they have, I mean, it's a normal requirement of landfills to have.
No, I was just curious what I was agreeing to.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from EA Engineering Science and Technology, Inc. to provide project management for the Sturbridge landfill for approximately $48,365.
Second.
All right. All those in favor? Great. Thank you. All right. Onto old business. I'll start. I don't have the evaluation tonight, and honestly, we'll have to do it when Chase is here so we can set a retreat. So, so we'll hold that one. All right. Old business, Mary.
No.
No.
I noticed in our packet we had district agreement. Can we discuss that?
Well, we... Oh, I don't think that was supposed to be in the packet. That, I'm sorry, that was supposed to be sent to you separately just because it had been requested for when it goes on an agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think I, yeah, I haven't reviewed.
Yeah, I was, I was actually in the packet. I just, and you should also get the PowerPoint that you had asked for.
Yes, I asked. Okay. And I have nothing.
Since we're doing that just under old business, and I think Jamie got, did a really good job getting to the bottom of like how much the facility was going to cost and all of that, can we kind of have, would we discuss this, which will help me, kind of on a spreadsheet, like what it would cost to keep dispatching local and addressing any concerns that we have? I know you said maybe it's going to require an over, but whatever it costs, and then whatever it costs upfront to, to go into the regionalization.
And the state funds. Because I think what is, because there's part of the appeal of it, right, in the, let's call it a sales point, although it's probably not the right term, is that the, because the state is moving towards the, these type of district designs for dispatch, that the, it's more likely that they're, they're going to be pushing more money towards those. So it's like going to the question about the building. So they're saying you're getting a $13 million facility and then Sturbridge doesn't have to pay for...
Seven million.
You know, anything part of that, or, you know, they'll have to pay the $500,000 or $600,000 operating fee. I think we need to have all those sort of...
I would like that.
Because it does, it does make it a lot easier for everybody.
I'll do a visual for you on that. Because I, I was starting, and...
I can get a visual for you on that.
Yeah. And just sort of like how those operational costs really work and, you know.
That would be fabulous. Because I, I just, I also haven't studied that district agreement. I know you sent it, but, but I did know in order to withdraw, you have to satisfy your financial obligations. So I guess one question I had, I'm always thinking of the worst case, you know, we don't like it. Obviously, if you love it, you're okay. But if you don't like it, you are still on the hook for your contribution to that building when you got, you would still have to satisfy that. In other words, it made it sound like, well, if you don't like this regional, you can go to a different one. But there's a financial consequence, correct? Because I know, like, say with regional schools, I'm not saying we'd ever want to do this, but like if you wanted to get out of a regional school system, you'd still be on the hook for the, that loan with the other towns. And that's a big reason why, like, nobody would ever, because years ago, people said, what if we have a Sturbridge High School, it's like 15? And it was explained, well, you're on the hook for the amount. So anyways, if that can be looked at...
That's a good question. So I think I have to ask two questions. I have to ask the question, A, if we have them invest $7 million in us and we decide we want to go back on our own again, are we on the hook for the $7 million loan? Or B, if they invest $7 million in us and we go to a different regional, does that different regional then have to pick up that? I mean, so there are a couple of different...
I think it's also a distinction in that within, and I don't know how this is getting paid, when you're paying for buildings, you're bonding generally speaking. Whereas if you're running something through a state cost, whereas, you know, I think, I think the number they said was 13 million, but maybe, let's just say it is, or 10 million, or whatever it was, that is not necessarily money the state has to bond. The state can, unlike us, will just, can write that check. And not necessarily, might bond it, but their bond rating's not actually all that good. So I suspect they just pay.
They're probably going to write the check.
Yeah, and so the, the, so my expectation is it's, it's a similar question, but a distinct one. It's, it's how do they, are they actually going to pay for it? What, how does that money actually move? Not, not, you know, because, because the school district, you're still going to have a bonded amount of money for the municipalities. What do they usually pay? Half, half state, half of us.
But this is cash grant out. Very likely, this is the state fund, 911 fund.
I think it's the 911 fund, and I think it's cash.
It's definitely coming out of the 911 fund. Now, whether they have a bonding authority or not, but I doubt that. I mean, I agree with you. It's probably, but I'm guessing...
They might bond on the backend, but they wouldn't, but they're...
But they're cash.
Yeah, it's probably cash. So...
You don't think there's borrowing at all?
Mainly, I can find that.
Whatever.
I can find those out.
And the way you described it, it didn't sound like, they need to word bond once.
No, I didn't hear borrow or bond at all in any conversation we've had.
I know, it would have seemed to come up naturally if that's what they're doing. But, because it sounds like there's a pool that's created from a federally mandated fund attendant to cellular line item tax, and that that goes into a bank account.
And their fund is continually increasing as cell phone use increases and numbers of cell phone, people are getting rid of landlines. So where we're losing on cable and internet landlines, we're gaining on cell phone surcharges.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. So at some point, when you do that, just tell me what indemnification, there, there's something about getting out.
Yep.
Termination or withdrawal. And it speaks about...
Well, let's, let's not do the...
Okay, no, I don't want to do it, but just something, something to do with financial obligation, and I want to know what that is.
You can always say, it's okay for you to send me an individual question by email to make, if you have something specific and I will get it to them, and then I'll answer it to the whole board so we don't have a quorum issue. But if you think of individual questions ahead, please send them to me, and I'll, I'll specifically get an answer to that, that question. And then, I mean, if it's something you only want the answer to, but most of these, I think the board's going to want any of the answers to everything.
Yeah, I think everybody wants to...
It's nice to have everybody...
And everybody has different questions. So she might think of something, Mary Lou might think of something, somebody else.
Yeah, but everybody needs the same information.
Yeah, we all want to hear the answers.
100%.
So, but you definitely feel free as you go through that to highlight things that you want further clarified.
All right. Well, let's put it on the next meeting anyways.
Okay.
Just keep it moving.
Next week?
I think so.
Okay. I'll try to get that all together.
I mean, if it's not possible, do it next week.
No, I should be able to pull the spreadsheet and get the answers.
Yeah, but if it's just, we just got to want to keep the process moving. And because that way, even if there are more questions that arise, we're still moving.
No, we don't have to rush.
I'm not trying to rush, but I don't...
Oh, no, 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 but I get the idea that...
Yeah, no, I'm ha, I mean, I'm not...
Individuals.
Yeah, I'm not rushing in any stretch, but by the same token, I do want to keep the conversation going because typically, because that's kind of how you get to wherever you're going to get. All right. And I think that's all I have at the end.
Okay. Now, Chase and the retreat. What month are we thinking about for?
Yeah, probably just before the holidays, I assume.
Yeah, because the evaluation really isn't the retreat.
No, but you have to set the...
Retreats forward.
You need the evaluation, well, you just need him here for, set the date. But the evaluation, just so we can set, the Robin can set her performance goals attendant to the, the evaluation. So the evaluation is minimally just a point of data that Robin needs to set her goals and whatnot.
Yeah, but we usually do not set the goals.
Well, well, that's, that's, but she, she has her own goals. We want to hear her feedback, and then we'll, I mean, obviously, we set the policy stuff. Okay. So do that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, 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 we, hold.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I did have a question.
All right, just stop. No, we can do something for her. Come on.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Wait till next week. No.
We're having weekly meetings. No, I apologize. I didn't.
No, that's all right. That's all right. MC Porter, 193 fiscal. Okay, you asked me too quickly before when, when it was the open meeting. I didn't even know that was going on tonight, so I was trying to take as many notes as I could.
Okay.
Do only the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen determine whether it's a split or a single rate? Is it ever brought to the people at a town meeting?
My, my understanding is that we set the rates. We're assuming it's the DOR policy.
Yeah.
So it's the...
Is there a reason why, you know, citizens can't express view?
Well, but in the hearing that we have and the assessors have are open meetings, so people could go or...
So the question, I think there's a couple of levels to it. So the first question is, is you're asking, is there a referendum or legislative approach to it? The answer, by understanding, the answer is that, is no. Where the, the way the process works is each year, the, basically, we have this meeting around this time of year, after we receive, you know, there, there's still some movement within the DOR evaluations, but after we receive the feedback, the fiscal year closes out, we receive the feedback on the assessments. We get the information from the state. The state tells us how to vote on it. But that, and really those, we're, not how to vote on it, how, the information we have, you know, putting the chapter land, different things like that. And then basically, we basically vote on that, those policy points each year.
Okay. But like Mary said, by law, you are required to have a public hearing. But, so that would be people's opportunity, I'm just saying, to come and voice their concerns one way or another.
Right. I mean, the only reason I'm here tonight, honestly, is I was planning on going to the planning board meeting, and I saw the last meeting was canceled. And for, and, you know, usually the Board of Select is every other week. And so it was just like, oh, for some reason, they're meeting, so I printed off the agenda and I came. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's my bad for not knowing that this was going on, but I just, I just find it interesting that it's pretty much, they make the presentation, they, they make a recommendation, you guys agree, and then it's, it's next. It just seems like a, a bigger, I don't know, a bigger topic than that.
Well, it doesn't, unfortunately, because this is almost exactly, you know, this, every year, this is posted, there's no surprises. This has been status quo ante, and nobody's...
Are there ever, any, are there any towns that bring that to a town meeting? I'm not from...
I don't think so. I think it's all, I think the way it works is the Board of Assessors in each community and the executive work together within the state restrictions. It's not, it, there's not as much wiggle room. There's not, you know, like, you can play with those categories, but you're really playing within that sandbox.
And the Board of Assessors meeting is not on video?
No, they are public, but they're not on video, and they post agendas in minutes.
Okay.
So they are open meetings, they're just not broadcast.
Okay. Trust me, when we did split the tax rate only for a few years, we had a lot of people come in after that, businesses not happy with the split tax rate. And it was a split board, 3-2. Just because we're top everywhere, like 85% residential, 15% commercial. So when you shift, she didn't get into it today, but individual homeowners get a very small benefit from it. Maybe, I don't want to put words, $50, $100, but the burden is much greater because only 15%. Basically, you're taking all of this burden, putting it on 15% of parcels, if you will, and it, and the benefit has to be spread out by 85%. And that's what Anne was trying to explain.
I think she, yeah, I think she said on one of the examples, I can't remember the percentage, but it was a $400 odd savings to the larger group, and it was, and it increased the tax to the other group on the same amount of money to like $2,600. So it just creates, it's, it's almost an exponential injuries on that.
See, I'll tell you where they do work, just if we could, do I take in a second?
No, of course.
Because if the public's watching, it's just, it's just... In communities that have big business, big manufacturing, big industrial, it works a little better because they can weather this. When you have a lot of small to medium sized businesses, we're going to lose some of the mom and pop. And then if you did that, you'd have to do the small business exemption, then any of the medium level manufacturing then gets an even bigger hit. The other risk is that, I will tell you that during COVID, I worked in a community that had a split rate. When values plummeted for businesses and manufacturing, the residential cost skyrocketed to offset it. Now, that doesn't happen often, it's an anomaly, but in that particular situation, in the worst of worst times, the community I was in saw a dramatic shift of balance onto the residential, and it was crushing, and we could not do anything about it. So it doesn't weather well if it has this bad. But the real big issue is the danger to small business economic development in a community where small business is the backbone.
So basically, we need, we need more business coming into. I mean, that's the bottom line, so that it's more equitable.
Except, but the reality of it is, unless you're getting real light industry and industrial, it's not really a protest, it's not positive. Because other type of businesses, you know, water, you know, police, water, sewer, fire, are, you know, so you're, it's a very specific set of industry that you want. Because it's like why, like Burlington, Massachusetts, for example, or Marlboro, Massachusetts, they have relatively small populations that, well, now it might be different because of COVID, but they had all these office buildings, hotels, and companies, right, like on the 95 corridor, all those types of towns. And they have, they're businesses that really just bring money in, very few ambulance calls, limited water and sewer needs, things of that, and things that are outflows into cash thing. And that's when you really get, that's the real major one. And also, I think, I don't know if it's still true, but it was true, that a lot of the the heavier industrial towns, they would have home repetitions, there'd be a whole, there'd be zones done by the state. It'd be, it's like, I think even Kelly Square is an entirely different kettle of fish. And it's not, because it gets, it's the type of thing that, you know, one leg falls out from under the stool, the whole thing goes over. So that there is a lot of, uh, it's, it's better to be conservative about it kind of in terms of like an approach, because you just, you know what's gonna happen, it's relatively even across the board and, you know.
And then the collateral damage of like the Sturbridge Hills, the, when you have a condo complex for retirees, if that goes up $20,000, they're gonna spread that cost, obviously.
Well, that's the residential. You're talking about the split tax rate, right?
What's both of those?
The focus is how to get the residential.
So there is collateral damage, there's collateral damage on it as well that.
To the population you least want to.
Well, I'm just wondering, it's like, you know, in general, as a citizen, as a, a Sturbridgeite, you know, how, is there any plan to try to get, you know, costs continue to increase? I'm on the finance committee, I totally understand that. But is there any plan to try to, um, you know, try to somehow help the residents in general for the increasing taxes that we pay?
Well, some of it's really difficult because the, especially for people on contained incomes. Whereas, you know, if you're someone like me and then my, my house is gaining and doubling in value, that's a win. I, I'm not really gonna be, it, it's that tension point where people are, are, you know, cause it's, the value of my house is doubled. It's gonna be okay, right? But it's because I'm working, my wife's working, et cetera. Whereas it's, it's, that tension point is in that place.
Those of us who are retired.
Yeah, cause it's harder. And, and it is, and it's a, I, I don't know the, and this is also part of it, and I think this is a fair assessment, some of it is almost 2008 brought things a little too low here and then 2000 and, and, and then COVID almost swung it too quickly as a corrective.
Yeah.
And so it, it's some of it, hopefully, that 4.8% number is indicative to normalization because some of it is nothing we can control because it's secondary to inflation, you know, major, I mean, New York City and Boston emptied out. That's not normal. And hope, and ever, like, so hopefully, that 4.8 number going back to 2016 is the curative you're talking about. It doesn't solve the, the harm from that, but at least it normalizes. So hopefully, that's where this is going. Yeah, it's not, it's not perfect.
But I mean, it's always the budget that's gonna set the, and I have to tell tax, cause then I end up getting texts from different, you set the tax rate and that's why, you know, he says, we don't set the tax rate. It's set because of the budget that we agreed to, we have to pay for.
It's, that I have learned over the past few years.
And it's not prospective. People think it sets the rate for next year so we can spend more. It actually simply sets for a year.
But one year, but one year, we did request our former town administrator to, during budget season, to come up with a budget that would not really increase. And I remember he didn't take a raise that year and there were different factors, but, you know, we worked it in the other way. In other words, come up with a budget where your taxes are gonna stay about the same and a lot of things were extremely level funded that year. You were on the board and.
Yeah, but, but, and some.
I know, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, but and some of it goes, we, and yeah, and it's, and as we have, we have relative to scale, we have robust public safety departments and we have, and we have,